Welcome, everyone, to the Hillsborough Township regular meeting, Planning Board meeting of April 13th, 2023. Please join me in salute to the flag.
....................................................................................
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5, the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, meeting and application documents have been made available through the township's civic clerk website, and complete application files are available in the planning and zoning departments for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. And with that, I have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Wagner is absent. Mr. Peasont?
Here.
Mr. Delcor?
Here.
Mr. Scovado?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Minimichigarelli?
Here.
Mary Lepani?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Vois?
Here.
Ms. Bello?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Hay?
Here.
Videoographer, I am here.
Do we need to get Jennifer on, too?
Oh, Jennifer.
I'm here.
There we go.
Thank you. It is voice.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a very heavy meeting schedule, so try to get through the early sections as quickly as possible. First, we do not have meeting minutes for consideration. We do have a resolution that Jennifer Bryson with file number 22-PB-17-S may have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve their resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. Guess it was a tie. Let Michael decide on that. Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mary Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, we have Planning Board Business. It's a hearing on the adoption or draft of an amendment Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan dated March of 2023. And that's why we have Ms. Jennifer Beam with us virtually this evening to go through that. So, I don't know, David, did you want to start or let Jennifer kick it off?
I can do it. It's fine. Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Oh, very well.
Okay, great. So, this would be very brief.
Jennifer, for the purpose of the record, indicate who you are and where you're from.
Sure. Jennifer Beam, professional planner from Leona Savaki, and I am the township's Affordable Housing Planner. Eric, do you need to swear me in?
Um, yeah, why not? To the extent you're raising, I'm assuming you're raising your right hand.
I am.
Testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I was here, I would say, a little over a year and a half ago to present the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan to you for adoption. Since that time, there's been a couple things, a couple things, there's been a lot of things that have been going on behind the scenes. But what I'm bringing to you now is an amended Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I want to make very clear, there are two minor items that are bringing this amendment to you. The bulk, the lion's share document, the demographic information, information about compliance with our obligation, et cetera, that has not changed at all. We have not introduced a new project, there's nothing new in that regard. What has happened is, I don't know if any of you recall, but there was an error, and it's my error, so I'll own it, in the compliance table that was located on page 75 at the time, which basically said, "We had 1,377 credits and our obligation was 1,378, and we're all good." And somebody brought it up at the meeting. I said I would look into it, we did look into it, we reconciled the numbers. In the meantime, we've been getting documentation from a lot of the supported needs housing as required by the court, and we've reconciled that table, which again, the bottom of that table is again on page 35, and in fact, we have 1,380 credits against the 1,378 obligation. So, we have two whole whopping units as surplus. So, that was, it was just a math error that has been corrected. And then, the second thing, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with, is the township has committed to providing a preference for veterans in our affordable housing units throughout the various projects that we have moving forward within the township. And so, on page 38, which is the very last page of the document, there is a paragraph that basically references the statute and discusses how a veteran's preference is now allowable, and the township is intended to take advantage of this preference. And that is literally the conclusion of anything that has changed since the last time that I was before you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the dais? Questions? Eric, what action, do we open to the public?
Yeah.
Okay. They have a motion to open to public.
On this issue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding the amendment Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Meryl Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. Jennifer, I appreciate your explanation. There is one other thing that's very different, the new one is 10 pages shorter, it doesn't have any finance information. In fact, the old one that was issued in November of 2021 has been removed from the township website, and this new one has been added, you know, prior to this meeting. So, I guess the question is, what are we going with for finance information now?
The spending plan is a separate standalone document that has been modified, that's a governing body document that would have to be approved by them, but there have been changes to that, and so this is just the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. The spending plan is a separate document now, so before it was appended to this, which is what you're referring to as the financing information, it's a standalone document that is gonna ultimately have to go before the governing body for their approval after direction of the court. Currently, we're waiting for sign-off from the court-appointed master, which is what we're waiting for before bringing it before the governing body. But it hasn't just dropped off, it's just kind of separated, because this is the planning board initiative, that's a governing body initiative, and we're still waiting for commentary on that, so we want to get this piece finalized.
Okay. So, it was included with the governing body documents before, it's not now. I'm just wondering if the spending plan that was submitted in 2021, if it's still current, even though it's being revised, could be?
It's not current, so no. So, basically, well, first of all, the spending plan that was initially approved by the governing body in 2021 is still waiting for final approval from the court. In the interim, there have been requested changes to that document by the court professionals as well as Fair Share Housing Center. That has been done, the document is in draft form, waiting for final sign-off from the court-appointed master. That will go back before the governing body, it'll be a public document, and the governing body will have to approve it at that time before the court ultimately signs off on it. But we're waiting for the court-appointed special master to say that all the items that she wanted revised in that document are revised to her satisfaction.
Okay. Do you have some idea of when that spending document will be done?
I mean, Eric is not asking right now, I can't see him, but he's probably chuckling, because we're struggling to get consistent feedback from the court-appointed special master, but we are hopeful, Eric and I, I guess you can speak to this as well, we're hopeful, I mean, we're looking to do this ASAP, so we're not looking to like drag this out. I mean, if they, if she gives me an email tomorrow saying it's good, we're moving forward immediately, like we're ready to be done. So, it's really just up to her, and given our track record, our past history, it's anybody's guess.
Okay. So, if I understand correctly, between the spending plan and any other miscellaneous stuff that was in that conditions document, when that is completed, then we're looking to have final reposed, right?
Correct.
Yes, that's the goal, yep.
Okay. So, I know we have a busy schedule, but there's a lot of people who don't understand affordable housing, and I was just wondering if since this is the document that has the obligation in it, if we could just have like a brief summary of it? There's a lot of people in the audience tonight to?
I understand, so in the document on page 34 and 35, I mean, it doesn't even fit on one page, is a table. So, our obligation is 1,378, and in the document, there are 168 credits for supportive needs housing, 455 credits plus 180 bonus credits for family rental units, and 175 credits plus 98 bonus for 100% affordable projects, and 44 units of age restricted as well as 260 units of zoning. That has not changed since the last time I was here. So, there's nothing that has changed in that regard, but at the end of the day, our obligation is 1,378. We put forth a plan that the court has accepted for that 1,378 that includes a variety of projects ranging from group homes to family rental projects to 100% affordable projects on the Sherman Track, some age-restricted projects that are a little older, and then some zoning that I think, Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that zoning has been implemented already, correct?
Yes, that's a town center zoning, that was a request from Fair Share Housing.
Right. So, at the end of the day, we comply with what our obligation is for this round, we have two whole whopping units of surplus moving forward to the next round. So, it was really just correcting the math mistake in the table and adding the veteran's preference, which I know is something that the governing body endorsed not that long ago, I would say within the last month, but we wanted to incorporate it into the document. Those are the only changes, nothing else has changed.
So, now that we're in 2023 instead of 2021, if we look out against the affordable commitment obligation, that's either not built yet, I think everything's zoned, but that's either not where the application hasn't gone through, or the construction hasn't occurred yet. I think it's around a couple hundred still, but how much, and I know this isn't part of the affordable housing, but people kind of want to know how much more housing is going to be built because, especially because of following on development, we have like warehouses, so?
So, to that end, I can't answer that question. I know that all the zoning has been put in place, it has been in place for quite some time. I know the lion's share of the applications or the projects that are in the plan have come before this board already and have received approval. When they're gonna put a shovel on the ground, I have no idea. But understand, too, that, you know, we're up against the 2025, which is when the next round starts, and what that obligation will be at that point, I have no idea. So, I don't really know that I'm able to answer that question, you know, with any certainty other than the fact that the projects that are in the plan have been zoned for, the vast majority have been approved, and now the applicants are in various stages of either resolution compliance, off-resolution compliance, waiting for construction, and when they put a shovel on the ground, I have no idea.
Okay.
And I understand your concern, but I don't, I can't, I don't know.
I'll add one more thing. The one more thing is, as you periodically attend the planning board, when was the last time you saw a planning board application for residential housing? And the answer is, with the exception of the outstanding affordable housing developments, I don't think we've had a residential plan of any merit in at least the last 12 to 18 months.
Well, I understand that.
And therefore, I don't necessarily see they're going to come anytime soon, and as Jennifer pointed out, we've got at least two developers with five sites, four sites, that have either gotten approval and have not moved to go forward with it, or have not sought the approval yet.
Right, I'm counting about four or five still large developments.
There are four, that by recollection is.
Okay. So, and I think, you know, based on looking at probably 200 plus?
Two of which have been approved by this board.
Right. So, we're probably still looking at somewhere close to 1,000 units to be completely built out by 2025, is that the?
No, not even close.
Not close, but Ms. Bisberg?
I mean, I do have to just interject. Number one, we're here strictly for this minor amendment, and I understand the concerns, and I'd be happy to talk to you offline, but as far as this public hearing, it's on those two limited items. So, I would urge that, like if you have other questions specific to those two specific areas that we've amended the plan, I'm more than happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'll be happy to talk to you offline about this global issue, but that's not really what, that's not the subject of this, so.
Okay. All right. So, I will bring my, I guess my finance question.
I mean, David, both David and Eric know how to get ahold of me, they have my office number, you're more than welcome to call me, and I'll have a chat with you about all this stuff. I just want to keep the public hearing focused on what we're doing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Susan Gull, Fort Hunt Club Road.
Why don't you pull, Susan, pull the mic out of the thing, I know how much you like it, getting tippy-toes. Sit down if you'd like.
I have a question on the preference, the veteran's preference, is that also a preference for only residents or for any veteran?
No, it's not for only, it's not for only residents, it's for veterans.
Do we get any extra credits if it's a veteran via disability?
Nope.
No extra credits for that? Okay, and the 1,378, it's only good for two more years, right?
Pretty much, and then we're gonna get a whole new number.
Thought that's what I heard, thank you.
Yep.
And as a reminder?
Unless you have someone down south that will delay it.
As a reminder, the legislature is up for reelection this year, so make your opinions known.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. Jennifer, you mentioned something to the extent of there was some examination of some of the, some changes that were being looked at with regards to some of the developments. Do you know?
No, 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 I did not. What I said was, there was a math mistake in the table, which was corrected, and we added a paragraph for veteran's preference. That is the only thing in this document that has changed.
Nothing relating to any of the units at all?
Nope.
Okay. And so, I guess I just wanted to ask a question relating to premier, and whether there's been any examination of that particular, on Valley Road, as to whether changing it or eliminating it by either the?
David, Mr. Chairman, it's not?
So, again, I'm gonna go back, but it's not what we're here for.
Please fix to the two.
We're here for the minor amendment to the document, which includes correcting an arithmetic error and adding veteran's preference.
Okay, so let me ask?
That was, it's been included in the plan, it's been included in our settlement agreement, and so any deviation from that is gonna require action beyond just this, and it's not the subject of this public hearing.
So, let me ask a question either of yourself or Attorney Bernstein, what is the status of the current litigation? There's an order of conditional compliance and?
Again, Mr. Brooks, it's not part of this public hearing.
I think it's important that the public understands.
No, 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 Mr. Brooks.
I can easily?
I know, but Jennifer, Jennifer, we don't want, Jennifer, I don't want to, this is, this is common behavior that goes on here that we're gonna go off topic.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's rather impolite, okay?
No, it's factual, so you've been told already, twice already, to stay what the purpose of this public hearing is, we are not deviating. So, unless you have a question with the math that was corrected or the veteran's addition?
The agenda does not say this is limited, for one thing, okay?
It says amended Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and I was very specific under multiple instances in the short time that I've been on the hearing, what the amendment consists of. And that's what the focus of this is. It's not a carte blanche to open up all the questions having to do with all affordable housing, township-wide, that is not the subject of this. And quite honestly, it's not the subject for the planning board. If you have questions about the status of the settlement agreement and where we are, et cetera, that's a township committee question that should be asked at a different meeting, right? This is not the correct venue.
So, I'll just simply ask the question, and you can decide whether you want to answer it or not.
Okay.
Has the township ever held a public hearing on the affordable housing settlement for the public?
Yes, yes.
For the public?
Yes.
And when was that?
The settlement agreement was approved in public at the township committee. I don't know the exact date, but it's not something that can be signed outside of a public action. So, the answer to that is yes, and if you're curious about it, I would suggest you file an Oprah request with the court's office and ask for a copy of the settlement agreement.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna file an Oprah agreement, I don't need to, maybe Mr. Bernstein can elaborate a little bit more, because that's not the answer.
It is the answer.
I asked if the township has held a public hearing to review the agreement, which is required.
And I answered, the answer was yes. I understand you're not happy with my answer, but that is the answer.
That was a, that was a public hearing on the agreement for the public.
It has to be done in public, yes.
All right, I'm intervening right now. Mr. Brooks?
The answer is yes.
Do you have a question?
I just need to understand, that date again, please, the date?
No, 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 it's enough, it's enough.
The answer is yes.
This is not to commandeer, to talk about affordable housing. There's a wonderful YouTube video of a town hall meeting that, at the time, Mayor Delcor held. I would suggest you go onto the township's YouTube channel, watch it, and educate yourself and become knowledgeable, because it'll answer all your questions.
Well, I really appreciate that rather condescending comment, but I will go back and I will take a look, and I will educate myself about the amazing things that all of you did. Thank you.
Let me just, just so you're clear, Mr. Brooks, I think you're trying to parse words. Public hearing doesn't need to be a separate public hearing, it's a public hearing in the context of a public meeting. So, that absolutely was held, as the mayor has indicated, as Mr. Bernstein and Ms. Beam have all indicated. So, I'm not sure what else you're asking for, but that's the answer.
Mr. Delcor, my understanding is that after that, the court requires a hearing on the agreement for the public, and that's all I was asking for, and it doesn't sound like that happened. It only happened at the actual meeting that you're talking about, a separate meeting.
The public action that the court requires is before the court. So, we have a compliance hearing that will be coming up when we finish all these things, you're more than welcome to attend, it's open to the public. But at the end of the day, we had multiple public actions on this, there was a public hearing on this document a year and a half ago, there were public actions taken on settlement agreement, zoning, et cetera, all in the public. We had a fairness hearing before the court. So, I'm not really understanding which part of it you feel it did not take place, because every piece of the puzzle is being regulated by the court and has been done in accordance with the Municipal Angish Law, the Fair Housing Act, and the rules governed by the court. And I don't really know what else I can say on that matter. The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, so you mentioned, you mentioned the compliance hearing before the court.
We don't have a date yet.
Okay.
We have to get through this process first, there's no date on that.
All right, I'm gonna put an end to this right now, the Q and A. Is there any other members from the public that have a question on the Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan? Seeing none? Eric, motion to close?
Yep. So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what is our?
Motion to approve the amended Housing Element Fair Share Plan as presented by Ms. Beam relative to the two changes that she has discussed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Any final comments from the dais? Roll call, please.
Mr. Peasont?
Yes.
Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Minimichigarelli?
Yes.
Mary Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
Have a good night.
Okay. I think I'm gonna take things a little bit out of order, I want to get to consideration of ordinances. Ordinance 2023-04, ordinance amending Chapter 188, Land Use and Development, Article 5, Districts and Standards, Section 188-107.2, T E C D, otherwise known as the Transitional Economic Development District of the Code of Township of Hillsborough, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey. David, I assume you'll provide a summary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning Board. The proposed ordinance would make the following amendment to the existing T E C D, Transitional Economic Development District, would remove warehousing, shipping, and receiving located completely within enclosed building as a principal permitted use, and remove parking standards associated with warehousing. The hearing is scheduled for April 25th before the township committee, and also supplied was a memo from me to the township committee, and I just wanted to highlight the following. In review of the 2010 Master Plan Amendment, the land use plan element that was adopted on December 9th, 2010, in which the T E C D was recommended, and shortly thereafter was created through ordinance, my, for the following reasons, it is recommended that the warehouse use as a principal permitted use be removed from the T E C D. At the time, warehousing was identified as a potential use appropriate for the zone and nearby residential neighborhoods, but due to market changes, the unanticipated size and scale of warehouses now being constructed, the scope in which they operate as a 24-hour, seven days a week, and the potential negative impact they have on immediate surrounding residential areas. Additionally, the connector road between Homestead Road and Hillsborough Road, parallel to Route 206 bypass alignment, which was supposed to facilitate traffic flow and direct back to the bypass without having to use Willa Road, was never constructed. So, with that, it's my recommendation in that the ordinance as presented is consistent with the master plan.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from the dais? Okay. So, don't hear anybody. So, I know back in 2010, a few of us were around for that, and for the 2011 adoption of the ordinance. I think I do concur with what you're saying, Mr. Coys, about, you know, what was term warehouse at the time, and I think, you know, perhaps it was listed in there as a support for the other types of businesses or uses that are in the ordinance, but I think I would concur that the removal and allow that to be, probably needs to be further defined and probably will be happening before the zoning board going forward on any new applications in that area, because things have changed in the 10-plus years. So. No, because this is not a hearing.
Not a hearing, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, this is a recommendation, so just for those in the audience that probably haven't seen the consideration of ordinance, we're not passing or approving the changes to the ordinance, that's a governing body, but by statute, it comes before the planning board, basically for our common consideration, recommendation, back to the governing body. So, the governing body has the full responsibility to decide to implement these changes, we're just here to provide some guidance or any comments. I think so. So, I guess a motion to?
It's a motion to recommend back to the township committee the adoption of the T E Z D, ordinance change, ordinance 2023- T E Z D, ordinance change, ordinance 2023-04, for the governing body to take the appropriate action.
Okay. Do you have that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
You can.
Oh, I can't, right, I can't, sorry.
Too many here tonight.
Anybody else above Ms. Smith?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Skovum?
Yes.
Sir Astag?
Yes.
Chiradowitz?
Yes.
Minimi Chigarelli?
Yes.
Ralapani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay. And I will back it up, and we will go to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. I will remind that there's a five-minute time limit. No commentary on warehouses, direct or indirect, because we have a couple of those applications this evening. We wanna make sure that anyone's thoughts are put on the record, but also to be fair to the applicant, for any comments with regards to warehouses is also on the record during their part of this evening's agenda. Okay? Let's see, oh.
Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. Actually, I'd like to invite you guys to an information session on warehouse development in Hillsborough that SWAT, our community group, is hosting Tuesday night at 6 o'clock here at the library in the multipurpose room. So it's just gonna be a public forum where folks can ask questions, get informed about, about the warehouse proposals and, and the impacts that they could have on the town. And we just wanted to, you know, provide some perspective. But we'd love to have you guys, you're all invited to come. We'd love to have you, have you there. And of course, everyone in the audience is also welcome.
Okay.
Hi.
Thank you for taking the time.
I just have a question.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Name and address, please.
Sharon Coons, 30 East Mountain Road. Actually, I'm speaking for my parents who have been deceased six months.
Yeah. Take the microphone out of the?
That's good.
Hello, hello, hello. Okay. I live on 30 East Mountain Road, across the street from the YMCA and adjacent to Delicious Pizzeria, and I'm considering selling the property, but I've heard that there's been gas pumps that were buried in 1970. And I have tried to call the EPA and get some kind of directive what to do if the property is safe, because I am right next to the old corner store. And just, if somebody can help me out with that, some answers what to do, because I'm not sure if I'm gonna sell it commercial or residential. So if the township could help me with that, I'd really appreciate it.
Young man right here can help.
Now, I was searching for a card. If you wanted to leave your contact information with me?
I have the lot number if you need that.
Well, so, so this is a property? Sorry, if, if I may.
No, three and a half acres.
So we, we have information on the property. There's been a long history in which the one that you're talking about?
Yes, I've been approached many, many times.
And our health department, it's a bit of a team effort between the planning, zoning, and the health department. So I don't know if you've spoken to Mike Carr?
I have. Actually, Rick Mance has spoken, or tried to speak, but nobody called me back.
Okay, so if you can leave, if you don't mind, if you could leave me your contact information, and I'll make sure that someone's going to follow up. And if not, I'll personally follow up with you and share with the knowledge that I have on the property, but we can give you some, some information and the status to where, where things are on the property.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Hi, Joe O'Connell, White Meadow Road. And I just had one quick question, and I, I know it's maybe not allowed, because it has to do with the ordinance that you just passed, but I got one of those notices there. It says that it's, the meeting will be beginning, be beginning at 7:30 next Tuesday. Is that the correct time? Because we've switched all the meetings to 7 o'clock.
That's the planning board. That meeting is township committee meeting.
Okay.
That's the governing bodies meeting.
So, okay, the two are different.
Yes.
All I needed, no, thank you.
Yep, no worries.
It's too easy tonight. I spoke too soon. I see you did. And I was. I'm like, hey. What's your phone? Come on. 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 Come on.[955.13]
Were provided, and where is that information in the township?
If you may, Chairman.
Please.
No problem. So basically, the folks that are responsible for that in terms of getting all permits with respect to DEP, whether it be freshwater wetlands or flood hazard area, it's typically done and completed during either compliance, and that would be by myself as well as Mr. Coys, and it's also followed up by the Township Engineering Department. When an applicant goes for, let's say, a temporary certificate of occupancy, they have to show proof that all permits were received and they met all conditions in those permits. Because it's not just a permit you get, there are conditions that are in those permits, and they have to be fulfilled. If they're not fulfilled, the applicant or developer at the time of trying to get a temporary construction, sort of temporary certificate of occupancy or certificate of occupancy will not be able to obtain that until they have all permits and they've met all conditions.
And so copies of those permits would be held in what department?
So that's typically going to be held with the, with both Mr. Coys, myself as planning board engineer, and then also with Drew De Sessa, the municipal engineer.
I'm sorry, who?
Drew De Sessa, who's in my office as the municipal engineer. Because the municipal engineer is ultimately responsible for the site inspections that occur with the construction of those applications and fulfilling the obligations with the planning board or the zoning board, whoever gave jurisdiction, you know, for those permits. Those outside approvals, that's not the board's, I want to say purview, that is the purview of the municipal engineer to make sure that those permits have been sought, or they cannot issue a what's called a compliance letter in order for a TCO or CO to be obtained.
Okay, and so that information can be obtained through the Open Public Records Act?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no additional comments from the floor. We will move on to this evening's public hearings. First one is Homestead Road LLC with file number 21-PB-25-MSPV with the time of decision of June 30th of this year. Let's see, what do we have going on? So obviously, this was rescheduled from last week because we canceled last meeting, and it was rescheduled this evening without notice. Do know there's a number of objectors here, too, so I will invite the objectors up to take one of the two tables.
And Mr. Chairman, while they're getting set up, I need to refuse myself from this matter?
Okay.
I will remain if there's further business after.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, while everybody is arranging themselves like the place on the record that we received for this application, two certifications of absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote. We received a notification that Kimi Minkshikarelli reviewed the Mark II 2023 video. He is eligible to participate this evening. We received a similar certification from Mr. Peason, which makes him eligible.
Mr. Bernstein, we can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Giannetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC. As you noted, this is a continued application for preliminary final major site plan and subdivision approval for property located at 189 and 203 Homestead Road, block 200.10, lots 32 and 33. The property located in the aforementioned T E C D Transitional Economic Development District. You know, as noted, the application was submitted December 22nd, 2021. We've had a few hearings before this board on May 12th of 2022, July 7th, 2022, December 8th, 2022, and then most recently, March 2nd, 2023. In addition to that original application submitted December 2021, there was also a submission made by Van Cleef Engineering on November 28th, 2022, addressing board professional questions and comments about disturbance on the property by the property owner's farmer. In that submission by Van Cleef, it included an area disturbance worksheet and exhibit, features exhibit wherein it confirmed that virtually no change to the topography was made, and that there's limited tree disturbance by the farmer, which was in the same area where the project, where the proposed project disturbance would be, was therefore accounted for in the site plan. In addition, Van Cleef submitted another, I mean, another re-submission to the board on February 17th, 2023, with updated plans and reports in response to the board professional review letters. It also included a proposed warehouse use and operations description. We appeared before this board on March 3rd, prepared with our witnesses to address a number of the issues in the review letter as well as the updated plans. We were not heard that evening, or not at least permitted to proceed that evening. We are back here this evening with two witnesses. First, our LSRP, as the board may recall at an earlier meeting, I believe as the mayor requested that, we have our LSRP come and testify at a meeting. And in particular, in addition to questions from the board, our LSRP has testified twice before the Environmental Commission. I think also there might have been some site visits with some members from the Environmental Commission. In addition, the board engineer issued a review letter on September 29th, 2022, discussing certain things related to the environmental status of the property with respect to contamination and remediation. It also included in that letter a discussion the board engineer had with our LSRP. So he's here tonight to address some of the issues that were raised and correct some of the information on the record. And then we also have our traffic engineer to testify and address the most recent board engineer review letter, go through his traffic report, and address the traffic-related issues. If there's any further questions, if me, I'd like to call my first witness.
First of all, I think, Mr. Chairman, you need to have the objectors indicate their position on the record, and the board has multiple correspondence relative to various related issues to this application.
So after the objectors state their position, should we go through those correspondence? Because there seem that there were some open or unanswered questions or differing of opinions, I'll call it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Sorro. I'm the policy director for the Watershed Institute. We submitted back on March-
Mr. Patel, you guys are-
Sorry. We submitted a letter on March 1st, generally objecting to the hearing going forward for the various reasons. I know Mr. Coys has, you know, resubmitted additional letter. We support that position. We support the position Mr. Bernstein has provided to the board and would encourage the board to follow their advice. Thank you.
John Lanahan, 42 Windy Way, Hillsboro, objector number four. I also concur with the letter of Mr. Coy and Mr. Bernstein. I also like to just point out to the board that you did take a vote at the last meeting to adjourn and carry this meeting until the DEP documents weren't presented 10 days prior. So I would ask if the board decides to go forward tonight, that we have another vote for a roll call to see how the votes are again. That's all I have for now.
Scott Gross. Scott Gross, 8 White Meadow Road, objector number two. I generally concur with the other objectors on the NJDEP issue in that this, as agreed in the last meeting, we would not be continuing to hear the application until the NJDEP issues were adequately resolved, and they have not been, also as reiterated by Mr. Coys and Mr. Bernstein. I believe the board is trying to protect all involved from wasting valuable time and resources on flawed application, and we should discontinue for now. Number two, regarding procedural issues, the last testimony on the application, I believe, was by the applicant's planner, Ms. Cafone. We should pick up from there. That was stated by Mr. Sarachi after Ms. Cafone's testimony. We ran out of time in the last meeting. And after that, my understanding is we would normally hear a site plan and stormwater next, and I'm wondering why the change in procedure. Who's decided procedural issues?
So I can address some of that if you like.
There's one more objector.
Objector number three.
Yeah, we need those red shirts. Objector number three, Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. Yeah, so very much in support of the really common sense approach that the board experts, the board attorney, and the planning board took with regard to, you know, the contamination issues and the, and the wetlands issue. Really, the common sense is the resolution of that issue could render the plans that we're poised to talk about completely, you know, irrelevant. And, and so while there's lots of legal arguments, I mean, common sense would say we really should get those addressed first. This is not a temporary building. This isn't, this isn't a minor addition to the landscape. This is a very significant, two very large, huge buildings. One of them is, would be the second largest building in the entire township. So not something that we ought to do without the kind of diligence that you guys demonstrated the last time. My second point is, again, you know, really what Scott was talking about in terms of the, really kind of puzzling about talking about traffic at this point. If we sort of cast our minds back, the last thing that was happening was Mr. Ford was testifying with regard to the facility, the layout, the number of truck docks, the parking spaces, the aspects of the, of the facility and the stormwater management. And he was in the middle of doing that. He wasn't finished when, if you recall, we all recall, because we're all here, that there were issues around subdivision and that the decision was made, rightly so, that the next thing that should happen is that we, that subdivision issue gets sorted. And, you know, and so that was going to be the next thing. But then that got interrupted by the discovery, stop work order, and the discovery of other things and contamination. And so then rightly so, again, you guys were taking the right steps to say, we have to sort out the, the environmental issues. Once those are sorted, then I think we would go back to the, so, so in the order in which I would suggest this happens to be an orderly hearing, perhaps it makes sense for the, for the applicant's LSRP to, to, to address the NJDEP issues. And then we would have, the objectors would have an opportunity to bring our own experts to rebut, to testify and rebut the LSRP's testimony. Once that's finished, then we'd go back to the subdivision issue, and I would think Ms. Cafone would return and complete her testimony. And then the objectors would have an opportunity to bring their own experts to rebut her testimony. And then I think we'd go back to Mr. Ford, especially since there have been changes to the facility and the layout, have him re-review the things that he's, he's presented and the storm order. And I know for a fact that we have objectors who are going to bring experts to, to testify and rebut his testimony. So we didn't, the notion that the applicant can just on a whim decide, hey, let's talk about traffic tonight, is really not appropriate and not an orderly hearing, and not what you guys have done. I mean, I, you know, you, you guys have been, have taken a very orderly, reasonable approach to, to these applications. So just urge you to continue to do so and, and not just go based on, you know, gee, we have our traffic guy here, let's have him talk. So, thank you.
Can I respond? Are there any more objectors?
Yep. We have four right now, so.
So initially, I'll try, and there's a lot to unpackage there. First, with the suggested procedure, this is the applicant's application. The applicant paid the application fees, paying for his expert witnesses to be here, and has paid the escrow fees. And this constant, they get to control the hearing and the application is not how it's supposed to work. They will have their opportunities to ask questions of our witnesses, and if they disagree with those answers, they can present their own case during the public comment portion after we finish our case in chief, which we have not been able to do yet. With respect to procedure and the DEP issues, first with respect to the wetlands and this, what he believes is a common sense approach. It's not a common sense approach, because if that's the approach we take, we will never get anything done because we would be in a hamster cage. The DEP could say, well, we're not going to hear your application because the planning board may change your layout and approval. And then you're going to say, well, the DEP may change your layout based upon their review and approval, so we're not going to hear you. In that instance, our application never gets heard. And that's why the law is clear with municipal land use law. The planning board's role in jurisdiction is does our application comply with the town's site plan ordinance and subdivision ordinance. That's it. The DEP will address its issues, and it has a specific provision, which I've highlighted in my letters, NJSA 40:55D-22, that says the board can condition any approval on the outside agency approvals. It can't refuse to hear an application because there are outside agency approvals pending. In fact, Mixer Hayes just noted with that lovely woman's question about other applications, and she wanted to know, well, how do we know they get their flood hazard area permits? And just as we've been saying, resolution compliance. Just because a planning board approves something doesn't mean we get to build it. We still have to get all of our other approvals. And those approvals are conditions, or those other outside agency approvals are conditions of any planning board approval and dealt with as part of resolution compliance. So any notion that an application can't proceed because you have an LOI application pending, or wetlands permit pending, or there's contamination on the property is just not the case. And I know Mr. Bernstein will respond in a minute, but even with our letters back and forth, not one case cited said a planning board can refuse to hear an application. They have to listen to the testimony and then determine whether or not there was compliance with, with their ordinances. Now, with respect to Ms. Cafone, and she's not available this evening, at the same time, Mr. Ford was not in the middle of his testimony. He was, he testified at two hearings, the public comment carried into the next meeting, and that didn't finish. And then Ms. Cafone came and addressed the subdivision question that came up, which frankly, did not need to be dealt with separately. It's a fully conforming subdivision. No variance is needed. The board professionals' review letter stated the same thing. She confirmed that. All the, and then she was opening up the public questions, and majority of the questions dealt with the site plan, which is why we said it should be addressed through her testimony at the end because the subdivision and the site plan are all together. So with that, we've noted our LSRP is here. You can address comments as to the status of contamination and remediation in the investigation. It's not a basis to say, well, you can't, we're not going to hear the application until the property's cleaned up. Because also recall, as part of any approval here, that's how the property gets cleaned up as part of this project. The applicant's the one that's doing the investigation, and the applicant will be the one doing the remediation. As to the wetlands disturbance, we've submitted that information to the board already. There's no impact from the disturbance. And as I outlined in my letter, there's, the DEP rules are clear as to what occurs from the property owner's farmer's disturbance. Wasn't the applicant's disturbance. If there's a violation issued, it's going to be issued to the property owner or the farmer. It's not going to be issued to the applicant. But what is the enforcement? And after the fact permit, and that's the exact title of it in the DEP regulations, after the fact permit, a fine and/or restoration of the wetlands. None of that impacts our project as proposed. As to the, the solid waste on the property, and Mr. Coy was copied on the emails with the DEP, they made it clear. They want a corrective action, action work plan to remove the, the debris, and no construction can occur until that is done. They even confirmed the planning board can process and hear our application, just no construction permits and no construction until that work is done. So there's no basis to say our application cannot proceed until these DEP issues are resolved. And with respect to traffic, Mr. Ford will be coming back. He's not available this evening to testify as to the updated plans to address comments from the prior board engineer review letter and compliance. So he will be back subject to cross-examination, as will Ms. Cafone, because she'll be testifying as to the planning and the, and the relief being sought as part of the application with the site plan. Again, so there'll be an opportunity for everyone in the public to ask their questions. During Mr. Ford's testimony, there was a lot of questions about traffic. In the review letter, there were a lot of comments about traffic. So we can get to the traffic. There's no reason why we can't. All our witnesses will be available for public questioning by the public, and then when our case in chief is done, they will have an opportunity to present either their own factual testimony, to the extent that's what they're going to do, or their own witnesses. And then we would have that opportunity cross-examine. That's how it's prescribed in the MLUL. That's how it's done on a regular basis, and there's no reason to deviate from that.
So just a couple of things before Mr. Bernstein gets his bite at the apple. Just with Mr. Ford, because I know, you know, your firm's recently taken over this application, but-
But I've watched all the videos of-
Yeah, so Mr. Ford was more, yeah, was in the middle of his, of the public portion of questioning on his engineering study, so.
Correct.
He will need to come back, at least-
Understood.
For that, beyond, if he's going to be the traffic engineer also. So have that. But as far as, you know, the objectors, I'm going to say, they're not dictating to us how things are going. It kind of has been a little bit, I'm going to say, perhaps your predecessors have moved things a little bit out of order and decided to bring in certain witnesses or didn't have the certain witnesses available. So, so trust me, they're not dictating along those lines. And I know with the DEP, and I'm going to let Mr. Bernstein take it over, but I think we, there, there's two components to it. I understand the one about, I'm going to call it the trash portion of it. That was very clear. I think it's the wetlands portion of it is where there may be some question or doubt with where we stand today. So, Mr. Bernstein?
Well, it's the wetlands portion, Mr. Chairman, as well as the ongoing investigation at 199, which really has never been highlighted in terms of that issue. So let me try to address, the board has my letter. I, I'm not going to repeat myself. Mr. Giannetti and I have been having a lovely communication with each other over the last couple of weeks. And you've seen his position, you've seen mine. I'm not going to repeat myself in great length. I will point out to the board the following on procedure. When Ms. Cafone was here back in December, the chair advised, then counsel, Mr. O'Grodnick, that Ms. Cafone was to come back because there were still public members who might have had questions. We had come to the end of the evening. The objectors had questioned her regarding the subdivision. Ms. Cafone, if it's not going to be tonight if the board chooses to go forward with this application, it has to be here for the next one, and she's got to finish the testimony on the subdivision issue. What Mr. Giannetti then wants to do relative to her testimony as to the site plan is a separate and distinct issue. As to the issue of traffic, I'll leave that to the board in terms of whether Mr. Dean Willough will not be allowed to testify. At this point, there are issues that were raised by Mr. Hay in his reports. There are issues that are raised regarding the underlying issue, what's potentially going in these buildings that clearly impact traffic, but I'm not even going to get into that issue. Mr. Giannetti indicated to you that he has his LSRP here this evening. I am unaware that we have a report from the LSRP regarding what's going on in the site, the findings, and what I assume he plans on testifying to. And while Mr. Giannetti has been here, but not in the head counsel capacity, he has been here as co-counsel prior to la, to last year, and knows that the board requires that any reports that are to be done because you'll notice behind you, counselor, we have a large group then not being charged to be here, and we're not getting any money for them to hear, to hear testimony, as is the board, with something they've reviewed before your people give a testimony. So I don't know what you're planning on doing on the LSRP, but unless there is a report somewhere that I'm unaware of, and I inquired of Mr. Coys as to that, and I don't think he's aware of any either, nor Mr. Hay.
If I may, the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 and preliminary assessment that he prepared are uncivilized and was submitted to the board.
I'm assuming, however, there's been amendments to it since they were originally circulated.
No, I don't believe so.
Well.
I mean, that, our LSRP can address all that.
In terms of site evaluation based upon both the 199 and the 203 issues. And the wetlands issue, by the way, is not, we're going to get a letter down the road from DEP telling us to put the wetlands back. Where they put them back, how they put them back, what the impact is in the plan, et cetera, DEP may tell them, but doesn't impact ultimately the approvals. If the answer is we can condition everything, then if there's any deviation whatsoever, they're back here, which we know they are. But more importantly, they have to come back to the board, even if there are any deviations, to give an update on where the plans are. But the bottom line at the moment is there are ongoing, this is not a standard freshwater wetlands permit. It is in a letter of interpretation regarding where the wetlands may or may not be. There are no wetlands, at least at 203, that I'm aware of, because they no longer exist, having been dealt with by the property owner's farmer. No one is suggesting for a moment, Mr. Giannetti, that this is your client's actions, but they live and die with them, like we all do. So therefore, whoever did it, it got done. It hasn't been resolved. Yes, within the last week, which by the way, I'll also point out the comments, excuse me, in Mr. Lanahan's letter today, it was Mr. Coys's proposal at the March meeting, which Mr. Wolfson, in your stead, agreed to, that anything from the DEP that was related to the ongoing application would be submitted at least 10 days before. And you know, because the back and forth with DEP has gone on all in the last week, if that. So we're well be, we're now beyond the 10 days. So ultimately, if the board wishes to hear testimony, the board has the right to hear certain testimony it wants to hear. Mr. Ford is not here, because I understand he's not around. Ms. Cafone, I assume, is elsewhere, though her testimony was supposed to be the next one up. So if the board is even remotely considering entertaining above and beyond my comments, Mr. Coys's, et cetera, as to this application, then it should probably be limited to the LSRP for this evening. I will also point out to the board, you have another application that I assume at some point within the next hour, you're going to want to at least start to hear. So.
And just to be clear with the DEP emails, the chain started April 5th. There were some clarifications as to what they meant in that email?
No, clarification was, yeah, April 5th, which is, last time I did my math, is less than 10 days ago. And equally importantly, we were still looking for situation, but April 5th doesn't make 10 days today, no matter how hard we try.
No, but the point, the point being, with the substance of it, all the letter was saying was, the planning board can hear your application.
No, the substance of it was, they will listen, they will, they will receive a plan from your clients or your client's property owner as to how they plan on cleaning up the site with the debris that got found by a combination of the farmer who turned himself into DEP, and also Mr. Coys's stop work order related. That's what DEP said. Then there was an ongoing issue because your clients weren't happy with the answer, which the answer was you have to clean it up, and it missed the piece of the answer, which is, what about going before the planning board on this application? That's what's been the back and forth over the last few days, not that this was all settled out and there was confusion. The issue was that the individual from DEP did not give the answer you had initially anticipated, and then supplement, subsequently provided an opinion that is, indicates that at least when it comes to the debris issue, that shouldn't stop the application from- at least when it comes to the debris issue, that shouldn't stop the application from going forward. It doesn't, by the way, also impact the ongoing still stop work order, which Mr. Coice has issued, and is still in effect as far as I'm aware, except to the extent DEP has said it doesn't apply to the debris pickup, which may have its own implications, depending upon the ultimate plan that they haven't seen yet but will approve. So with all of that, and it was not my plan to go on at this point, it's up to the board what they want to do. You've heard everybody, you've heard all the comments, it's up to the board.
If I may, just one quick point. Sorry. There, you know, there was a commitment at the last hearing, as has just been pointed out, that the DEP material, the communications with DEP would be provided. It has not been provided. I asked an email yesterday to the applicant's attorney, not, one, to confirm which witnesses were coming tonight, and, two, for a copy of that email, I have not gotten. And it's not on the publicly accessible website. So we're talking about communications that the public has not had any ability to see, review, or comment on, or provide any input. So, I mean, there was commitment by the applicant's attorney to provide that at the last hearing.
There was no commitment to provide at the last meeting. If there was any, if there was any DEP permits or anything issued, we would provide it. This was just an email confirming what we have been saying this whole time, that it will get cleaned up, but it's not a basis to stop our application from moving forward before the planning board.
But there was no objection to the condition that that, those documents be provided 10 days prior to this meeting. We can discuss permits, violations, who has what, who's on first, but it was a simple resolution that the board adopted, and the applicant's attorney did not object. Have the DEP documents 10 days prior to this meeting. Hard stop. There's nothing to parse through on that. That was the condition.
That was the condition with the wetlands.
We can talk about the emails, but we can talk about the emails and all the other documents, but we don't have them. And that's all that was required.
Because you're not part of them. This was an email from the DEP saying, with respect to this issue, this is what occurring, but it shouldn't hold up the planning board from moving forward. The commitment to provide anything else was, if we got the LOI, if we had any permits, it would be provided. There was no resolution adopted by the governing body. It was a vote, part of the adjournment, where Mr. Wolfson here agreed, if we got the LOI or anything, it would be provided to the board in advance of this meeting.
Well, it wasn't that parsed, Mr. Giannetti. It was not a parse, it was not a parse as to, these permits are included and these permits are excluded. And the fact of the matter remains is, you and your client moved this, pushed DEP for resolution on the cleanup relative to the debris of the last week, because you wanted to come to the board tonight and tell the board, oh, by the way, you can hear this application, because DEP says you can hear this application. The only thing that DEP has ruled on, ladies and gentlemen, relates to the cleanup of the debris that came from the farming situation, that they are supposed to now submit a plan that doesn't hold up to that extent the issue related to the debris. What comes out of it is another story. But the rest of it was not parsed in the conversation. And the reason it wasn't parsed, Mr. Giannetti, and it's part of the resolu, part of the motion, is that if we didn't have the material, you are scheduled for another appearance in about five weeks. And at that point, the board was willing to go forward with the application, or at least decide where we were with the application, at the May 25 business meeting, which has been now set aside for your client's application. So ultimately, I'm trying to get to the board to...
I just want to correct. There was no bullying or intimidating of the DEP to influence them. We were seeking clarification, because this board was bootstrapping the DEP as a basis not to hear us. And we wanted them to be clear on their guidance as to what they were saying. That is it.
And they ultimately were clear on one piece of their guidance. It is not as to anything else, other than the cleanup of the debris found on the site, subject to a plan that has not been approved, subject to what comes out of the cleanup that has not yet occurred. And what I meant by parsing is, that's what DEP wandered into. And there were multiple back and forth emails, as you're aware, Mr. Giannetti. And you can characterize them one way, and I can characterize them another way, but they are what they are.
Well, I mean, have them here, can at least have them marked into evidence? I mean, I don't know if it comes part of the record.
I think the answer becomes whether they're all of them, but you want to mark in what you want to submit, it still isn't up on civic clerk, and none of the objectors have seen it, nor the public. So it's six and one half, you're more than welcome, but it's six and one and a half dozen of the other, because it still doesn't meet the 10 days, and it still doesn't meet the ability of the parties to review things. And that's why we have civic clerk, is to avoid having people coming up at these meetings and saying, we haven't had a chance to review all of this. And you've been to enough meetings here at the Borough. That it's one of the favorite questions of, that comes from almost everybody at the public. Where is this, and why haven't we had a chance to see this? So you, if you wish to ask the board to mark this, you can, but it isn't going to change the situation one bit.
I just want it part of the record. I know Mr. Coice is copying on it. I don't know if that makes it part of the record or not.
Well, the other piece, as I said, you want to introduce and have Mr. Lombardozzi mark these emails, and we'll put them up on civic clerk tomorrow, but not going to make anything different.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We'll mark them after they're done, Mr. ...
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry. I mean, one perspective to take also is, from the public's perspective, the last thing we knew was that the board said, hey, we're not going to hear anything on the 13th if there are no documents posted by April 3rd.
And Mr. Tarantino, they may ultimately come to that decision in a few minutes if you let them have that discussion.
All right. Just wanted to point that out, that that's what our, what we were anticipating, so.
Anticipating and what will happen are two very different things.
And just to be clear, the 10-day rule applies to exhibits, reports, and documents, or exhibits and reports. It doesn't apply to an email communication from the DEP. They didn't issue a permit. They didn't issue anything. They were just providing guidance on what they would require with their issue, but and what impact would have on the board.
They were responding to an ongoing investigation that was created by Mr. Coice's stop work order and by the farmer's own, going to them and indicating that a violation had been occurred. So it just didn't magically happen.
Correct, but they weren't plans or permits or reports that we're relying upon. That's all the point I was making.
Mr. Chairman, the board want to take a few minutes before... I think so. It's, I'm going to say we're going to take about a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 8:35.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, yeah, as Mr. Bernstein noted earlier with the agenda, we have another applicant on here. So we'll let the LSRP begin testimony, because it's related, you know, to wetlands issues and, you know, along those lines. But the testimony will stop at 9:15 for that presentation at the, and will continue, if he's not completed, will continue, will be the first witness at the next hearing in May, without any substitutions, other than for the LSRP portion of it. So that would be the expectation. And then Ms. Cofone would be the next person in May to finish the subdivision testimony at that point. And then after that, we would see Mr. Ford come back, because we have a whole new site plan, so we need to start that from scratch.
I'm sorry, a whole new site plan?
Well, significant change to, because now it's conforming as to...
I think it was like adding sidewalks and...
Well, the point is, Mr. Ford's coming back with a...
To talk about the revised plan. It's not a whole new site.
It's a revised site plan. So the answer is, and by the way, the decision to go forward with the LSRP does not indicate that the board will ultimately not, at some point, make a decision that this application cannot go forward until other issues are addressed. We, however, are trying to deal with the LSRP, as the chair indicated, related to, related to some of the DEP issues currently pending out there. And as the chair indicated, Mr. Giannetti, if his testimony, and what I mean by his testimony is not only his testimony, the examination of the board, the examination of the objectors, et cetera, I suspect will not be done, then we will be looking forward to seeing him on May 25th. So we're not, we're then having three witnesses out there who have not finished a piece of testimony, so.
And I would just, oh, Mr. Hay.
Mr. Roush, just one other thing I wanted to make sure I added. We did issue an engineering letter recently on Monday, and that engineering letter, there is one component that we would like to ask for prior to the next hearing, and that is, we'd like to look at the concept plan. We did recommend a roadway widening of the entire frontage. That concept plan should be provided to us, and that should be provided as an exhibit for testimony before we come back to the next hearing. I would ask that of the board of the applicant.
10 days prior to 25th, please.
Yes, thank you.
And I guess I would just ask, and to hopefully ensure that we don't keep having the hanging participles with our witnesses not finishing, when the public comes up for questioning, you know, as they're hearing it, they write down their questions, they can come up and ask questions, but they cannot come up and ask questions, and then go to the back of the line and come up and ask questions again.
No, if you've watched our videos, you do know that I try to limit that second bite at the apple, particularly when we have a standing room, you know, crowd, you know, situation, to keep that going, so.
Great, thank you.
Plus, with four objectors, I would kind of assume all questions anyone could think of is going to be asked, so.
Or some of them.
So at this point, I'd like to call our LSRP, David Robinson.
If you swear any testimony here tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And you're going to need a mic.
Yes.
Why don't we wait till...
David Robinson?
You've been twining, Mr. Robinson, obviously. Mr. Giannetti, you'll do the usual particulars to start.
Sure. So, Mr. Robinson, if you could just describe your place of employment, your education's, licenses, and experience in the field of environmental remediation.
Sure. I am employed by Synergy Environmental Incorporated of Cherry Hill, New Jersey. I am a licensed site remediation professional for 30-plus, well, licensed site remediation professional for approximately 10 years since the program started. I've been doing environmental work for 30-plus years. I am a chemist with a Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry. I've testified before many boards in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before the township environmental commission two times.
And your licenses are current or remain in good standing?
Yes, they are.
At this point, I ask him, would he be accepted as an expert in the field of environmental remediation?
Any objections? Seeing none, we accept. Please proceed.
And maybe, Mr. Robinson, if you could just provide kind of a little background, a little further background, kind of in your experience with, you know, dealing with contaminated sites as part of, you know, various developments.
Mr. Giannetti, before you start the testimony, can I make a suggestion and ask Mr. Robinson if he would place on the record the reports he has provided to this board? Because I'm sure somebody's going to ask that question sooner than later, so I'm...
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So as the LSRP, I have submitted to the NJDEP and to the board a preliminary assessment report and a site investigation report. A Phase 1 report was also submitted, however, that's not an official NJDEP document. It was performed by my firm, but not under LSRP oversight. Phase 1s are not performed under LSRP oversight. So preliminary assessment, site investigation report.
Any ideas of the dates?
I don't know for them right now.
Yeah, I don't think I have that.
The preliminary assessment looks like it's...
Looks like it's dated August 2021. The Phase 1. It's taking a second to load. Fortunately, the title doesn't have it on the... Oh, here we go. Dated July 1st, 2021. And then was there a Phase 2 investigation report?
There was a Phase 2 investigation report.
And that's dated June 2022?
That sounds about right. And again, a Phase 2 is not an official NJDEP report.
So is there a third report then?
Because I... There is, there is the Phase 1 and the Phase 2, which are due diligence reports, and then a preliminary assessment, site investigation report was submitted.
And when was that submitted?
You have the date. I could look. It was the end of 2022.
Sorry, there's a lot of stuff on civil clerk.
Mm-hmm. That's why I asked, among other things, for that.
Okay, so it was, I don't know the exact dates, it was submitted to the DEP, but on September 19th, 2022, was the environmental board meeting, and it was submitted prior to that, to the Borough.
And that was part of your testimony before the environmental commission was...
That was part of my presentation.
So the report is dated what?
The report is dated prior to that date I just gave you.
Do you have the date?
I do not have the date with me.
Okay.
So...
And it's, it's on civil clerk?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, all the, all the reports are on civil clerk.
Yes.
We'll have an opportunity for cross-examination when it's his turn.
I think it was simply to ascertain the dates on the report. I appreciate Mr. Robinson's indulging me.
So I guess, again, you just described some of your, you know, experience and background in redeveloping, you know, what's common for, is either brownfield sites or sites that have some sort of, you know, contamination involved.
Sure. I've been involved in New Jersey brownfield redevelopment since the late 1990s. I've developed several warehouse properties on impacted sites, currently working with the applicant on one in Palmyra, New Jersey, Burlington County, where we successfully completed development and a site remediation of the site. So I've been doing this since the brownfields program pretty much came into being back in the mid to late 1990s.
And, you know, we keep referring to you as an LSRP, a license, or a licensed site remediation professional. Can you just describe kind of what that is and what your role is?
Sure. Back in 2009, the state of New Jersey decided that sites were not being remediated efficiently, so they started the LSRP program, which licensed individuals with a large amount of experience to basically foster remediation through the, through the state, through the regulations. We have leeway in, in remediating, investigating, remediating sites and closing out sites through the process of writing a response action outcome, which is analogous to what the DEP used to write in a no further action letter. So we are tasked with making sure these sites get remediated and be protective of human health and the environment.
And there are kind of audits by the DEP and reviews as to, you know, various...
Yes, yeah, the DEP reviews, the DEP reviews all reports that are submitted for, for completion. They could choose to review other reports deeper. Generally, response action outcomes are reviewed more, more completely by the DEP. If an unrestricted use response act, action... are reviewed more, more completely by the DEP. If an unrestricted use response act, action outcome is issued, then what's called a remedial action permit has to be submit, application has to be submitted to the DEP, and they review that, and the DEP actually issues a permit. So there's a lot of back and forth between the LSRP and the DEP to make sure that everything's protective of human health and the environment.
Now, in connection with this, or the subject property, you're familiar with 189 Homestead Road and 203 Homestead Road?
Yes, I am the LSRP of record on 189 Homestead Road. I am familiar with what's happening on 203 Homestead Road, except everybody should know that that site is not subject to an LSRP. That is not under NJDEP site remediation oversight. So there is no LSRP associated with that site. My firm is, is helping the applicant, the property owner, to address the solid waste that was found on the site, but that is outside and separate from the LSRP program. So I'm strictly the LSRP for 189.
And can you just describe in your role as LSRP, that, you know, kind of the work you performed in connection with the property?
Sure. So, so, so during, when the property owner, Mr. Shockley, decided that he was going to sell the property, that triggered what's called the Industrial Site Recovery Act, ISRA. And what ISRA does is it makes sure that property transfers that have certain NAICS or SIC codes have to follow requirements of the ISRA rule. So once the property sale is announced, that triggers ISRA, which triggers the performance of preliminary assessment, and if required, a site investigation, and then remedial investigation, remedial activities later on down the line.
And you mentioned these, the codes, it basically deals with either industrial uses or uses that, like a gas station, things of that nature?
Correct. There's, actually, gas stations are not, NISC for gas stations, not ISRA subject. But there's a long list in the ISRA rules of operations that require an ISRA trigger. Mr. Shockley's business carding and septic was, was, had an NAICS code that required ISRA compliance. So that's, that was what initiated Mr. Shockley retaining an LSRP to perform that. In addition, during due diligence activities by the applicant, geotechnical test pits were performed. The geotechnical engineer determined that there was an odor coming from the test pit, so we went out and took environmental samples. The samples came back above NJDEP soil cleanup criteria, so that triggered a call to the NJDEP hotline to saying that there was a environmental impact, and it has to be addressed, and that was addressed under case number 210901-1251-30. And that also requires, outside of ISRA, the retention of an LSRP, which Mr. Shockley did. Both that case and the ISRA case were combined, so they're both being addressed currently under the ISRA case.
And kind of what's next with respect to the investigation?
So, so once ISRA is triggered, it's determined that the NISC code is, is valid, a requirement of a, of a file review of all old files pertaining to the site. Fortunately for this site, Mr. Shockley had performed quite a bit of environmental investigation previously, so we used those data. We also had to perform a site walk to identify areas of concern at the site, and based on what we found with the areas concerned, we had to determine if additional investigation of those areas was determined. So for this particular property, and this is all in the preliminary assessment report, we identified 25 areas of concern throughout the property. And again, this is just for 189 Homestead. Those 25 included the case that we knew was active, the 21 case. Out of those 25 AOCs, we determined that five AOCs required additional investigation. So based on what we saw in the site investigation, based on Mr. Shockley's old reports that he had, we performed additional sampling in five areas of concern. After we investigated those five areas of concern, we submitted the preliminary assessment site investigation report, which you have in your system, and of those five AOCs, one, one, two, sorry, three, four. So four AOCs are going to require additional remedial investigation. Those investigations have not occurred yet.
And with respect to at least what you've found thus far, how would you characterize that in respect to the size of the area and the levels that were tested?
Yeah, generally, what we found is we did not find high concentration levels. The DEP characterizes contamination by different saw remediation standards, so there's residential direct contact inhalation standards, which are fairly low. There's industrial, there's non-residential direct contact inhalation standards, and there's also what they call a migration to groundwater standard, which basically is a, is a concentration level that could indicate that in the future, through rainwater infiltration, things like that, that these contaminants could leach into the groundwater. So the majority of our sampling indicated that contaminants were above these very low migration groundwater saw remediation standards. We still have to delineate those to determine how large the areas are right now. We don't think they're, they're that incredibly large, but we have to do the investigation to determine that.
And what's the timeframes or deadlines, I guess, for?
Yeah, so, so the DEP has prescriptive regulatory mandatory timeframes to complete these things. Preliminary assessment, site investigation was completed. A remedial investigation and remedial investigation report must be submitted by September 2025, and then, once that is completed, a remedial action must be completed by September 2028. Doesn't mean we're waiting until those dates, but those are the dates that the law allows, allows the responsible party to finish the investigation and finish the remediation.
And with respect to these levels, again, if you, I believe there was the Board Engineer Review Letter, February 22nd, 2023, there was comment of whether this contamination was site-wide. Based upon your review thus far, how would you characterize it?
No, this is not, this is not site-wide contamination. These are very specific areas of concern. You know, most of, again, most of these concentrations are very low, but above migration to groundwater standards, so they have to be addressed, and they can be addressed through many ways. Once we complete the remediation, sorry, the remedial investigation, we may decide to do soil removal, say, or what we also could do is we could cap through the, through the warehouse structure, sidewalks, parking lots, things like that, and a cap is also protective of human health and the environment, allowed by the NJDEP. So we have not determined the remedy yet. Obviously, we have to complete the remedial investigation. That will let us know what type of remedy to choose, but right now, based on the data that we have, we do not, we do not see any major contamination or impacts at this site.
And you, you talked about some of the options being, I think you said soil removal or placing a cap. Did any of those items impact the developability of the site as being proposed?
No, the, the, obviously, if we remove the soil so that we're below any NJDEP standards, then the site could be developed without any type of deed restrictions or, or things like that. If we cap it, the warehouse development is a perfect way to cap this, this site, because it is a lot of slab and roadways and, and landscaped areas and things that will be not only protective of human health and the environment, but be able to be inspected and fixed regularly because of the activity. So a warehouse is, is, is a very, very good way to remediate through capping, and that's generally, you know, what we do on these sites that have warehouses, is it actually makes it more protective because we're putting the warehouse on.
Have you been involved with developments that had higher concentrations of contamination and that were developed with a warehouse or other type of non-residential use?
Yes, I mean, I've had very, very high levels of contamination. I had one site that had very high levels of freon-type chemicals, fluorocarbons. We had to do some major remediation. There were still concentrations above NJDEP standards that required additional measures, which were warehouse caps, basically. The warehouse development was the cap. When I say warehouse development, I mean everything. The roadways, the warehouse, the landscaped areas, and the whole development. So, you know, actually, from a, from my experience, the concentrations that we've discovered so far are very, very low. I mean, I, I would expect, you know, some areas that are not, have the type of activities Mr. Shockley did to have higher concentrations. I've seen sites that look pretty innocuous at much higher concentrations. So these concentrations are very low, from what I've seen.
And in your professional opinion, is there anything that you've seen thus far that you think would either prevent or impact the developability of the site?
No.
And as part of this development, or this proposed development, and that's how the site would be remediated?
Yeah, again, once we finish the remedial investigation, we'll determine the best way. But if we do no saw removal, then, then the warehouse development as a cap will be sufficient as remediation.
Let's all have a direct presentation of this witness. Any question from the board or their professionals?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As the counsel referred to, yes, we did prepare a letter on February 22nd, 2023. That letter really summarized our discussions with Mr. Robinson concerning some of the activities going on with respect to, you know, what was found at the site and what needs to be remediated. I think, I think Mr. Robinson's pretty much so addressed every issue in that letter. The only issue that remains, which I would ask that the board put a condition on, is that we make sure that our remedial action work plan be shared with our office, just as a check to make sure that there are no other institutional controls will be required. I believe that that's not typically common practice, and what I've been seeing in the past, but I think, you know, with respect to what's been going on with the open case, if we have that, I think that will satisfy the questions we have during construction.
And we're fine providing that.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's all that comes out. I think, I think the applicant pretty much so addressed everything that we're looking for and that we're hoping to get some answers. But one of the things you'll notice in the letter is that, you know, whether or not remedial investigation has been done or not, that has still not been the case. So things haven't changed in the last two months, but again, the applicant goes forward, and if they gain approval, they'll have to move forward in order to go ahead and put in our remedial action work plan, and that will come to our office, and we'll review that.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions to, to clarify. Do you know what the contaminants were?
Yeah, so. So in the, and I'm sorry, I don't have a, I don't have an exhibit to show you where everything is. I had a, I didn't have time to prepare one. But in the truck parking area, which is kind of in the middle of the site, there was, there was.
While Mr. Robinson's looking, Mr. Giannetti, the assumption is he will be back. I assume we will have such an exhibit?
If the board would like to see an exhibit, yes.
I think.
I could bring up.
Yeah, we could actually bring it up.
I could bring up an exhibit showing, if I bring up the site plan, would that be easier to describe it, or are you looking for a particular?
In the, yeah, it's, it's exhibit that shows the AOCs, but it was presented at the, at the Environmental Commission. We'll have it available before. So, for example, we have beryllium in some test pits, concentrations ranging from 1 ppm, sorry, from 0.85 ppm to 1.4 ppm. So the resident, the lowest residential standard for beryllium is 160 ppm, and that's the New Jersey residential inhalation direct contact standard. However, the migration to groundwater standard for beryllium is 0.7, and that's where I'm saying some of these compounds were above the migration to groundwater, but well below any impact to human health to the residential standards. In the vehicle wash area, we had benzene at 0.012 ppm, and again, well below the, the New Jersey direct contact standards, but above the migration to groundwater standard of 0.0094. Okay, in the truck parking area, we had tetrachloroethylene at 0.057 ppm. Again, the lowest residential soil remediation standard is 47, so well below any human health impacts, but above the migration to groundwater of 0.0086 ppm. Benzene I mentioned, trichloroethylene, again, 0.13 ppm, well below any of the residential and direct contact criteria, but above the New Jersey migration to groundwater. Total xylans at 28, the residential SRS for xylene is 12,000 ppm, but above the migration of groundwater of 19. Cis-12 dicloroethylene at 0.69 ppm, again, above the migration to groundwater of 0.35 ppm, but again, below the residential health-based standards. Several metal compounds, all below the health-based standards, but above migration to groundwater, and this is again in the truck parking area, cadmium, lead, mercury, nickel, and silver, all well below their respective health-based criteria, but, but above migration to groundwater.
So, in, in your professional opinion, how would you characterize that most of the contamination was generated?
That I don't know. I mean, I, that I really don't know.
I mean, it seems like a different array of stuff.
Yeah, you know, generally, you know, if we have benzene in the truck parking area, I can make some assumptions that.
TCE.
Sloppy TCE, if there was some parts washing, or, you know, that little amount of TCE could even really, if you brought home dry cleaning and dropped it in a puddle, you could get those low concentrations of TCE, so.
Same thing with the beryllium.
Yeah, the metals are a different story. Metals are just there, could be from shavings, from truck rust, you know, that's all in the rust and things like that. I really don't know why it's there. Because of the concentration levels, I could say with, with good confidence that something was dumped, somebody didn't spill out a, you know, a bucket of, 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 you know, waste oil that contained these metals or things like that.
So the, the LSRP and the remedial process, do, do you, as the LSRP, get to make the decision in terms of the final actions on the plan, meaning like if, is it you that decides to put the cap or to remove the soil, or does the DEP have to remove it, or is that your decision?
Well, if I was to remove the soil. Well, if I was to remove the soil, because I would remove it so that it was below all standards, then it'd be my decision, and I report on it, and I just have to do it according to regulations. If I was going to cap it, and there's going to be contamination left, then I would have to put in a remedial action work plan that the DEP has a chance to review and comment on. And then, at the end of the day, if I am going to cap it with contaminants above, above the standards, I would have to get what's called a remedial action permit. So, I'd have to apply for that permit for the cap, which the DEP really uses as their final review of, have you done everything correctly? Because they're the ones that issued the permit.
But that might or might not take until 2025. I mean, depending on what actions, whatever actions you decide to take. I mean, that's kind of the way it goes, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the applicant has no desire to slow this process down, right? So, we're going to move along at their schedule. If they tell me they want to, you know, start the development X, I'll make sure I have my ducks in a row X. So, that's just the, the 2025 is just the regulatory timeframe. Remember, it's for all, it's for all sites. This is a very easy, this is going to be a very easy site to complete the investigation and complete the remediation. Some sites aren't so easy, and you need all that time to figure it out. This is not one of those sites.
But you're, I mean, you're going to have to, you're going to have to try to figure out what affects the footprint of the warehouse and where the contamination is and make your decisions based on, based on that.
Absolutely.
But we're not necessarily going to get a letter back from DEP that says, you know, they're okay with it, that's the LSRP's decision. And that'll be like a condition of whatever, right?
And if I might point out, Mr. John, that's what we wanted to do, was to get the remedial action work plan, so any of the institutional controls, we can understand what those are and how they relate to any capping if the applicant chooses to go that route. We were considering it to be site-wide. The applicants represented tonight, it is not site-wide. And we concur with the applicant, because our LSRP in our office spoke to Mr. Robinson and concluded that the levels of beryllium were so low and contaminants that they're very akin to what we would find even with some farming activities from over the last 50 to 60, 70 years. I've seen that a lot of sites in Somerset and Hunter County, and it's typical. So, but it is different than what we thought it was. We're site-wide. It's now small areas. So, they really have choices here. But that will be identified during remedial action work plan.
So, that's where we are in the process, basically.
If you could, Mr. Robinson, I, and this is for you or whoever on our team can address this, but for the sake of ourselves, myself, and the public, on Civic Clerk, I see a Phase 1 cover and executive summary only, which is the three pages of the Phase 1 report, and then a Phase 2 investigation report, which is 600 pages long, authored by Mr. Gingrich and Mr. Hauerbaugh. So, I don't see a report, I don't see the preliminary assessment report.
Should be there.
Right. So, can somebody please find it so that it's easy for everybody to find? I haven't found it yet, and I'm drilling. And so, that's, if it's in here somewhere, somebody can please point that out. And, you know, there's nothing in here that says, well, the preliminary assessment is something from Mr. Ford and not from you. So, I was looking, but I'd appreciate if somebody could make that easier for anybody who's going to come up at the next hearing to at least take a look at your work.
That's an easy one.
All right. Good enough. Thank you.
There's one more minute left. Any more questions from the dais?
Mr. Chairman, I may have a few, but I think I'll reserve it till the next hearing.
Okay. All right. You want to ask one question?
Yeah, we'll wait. I mean, I haven't read that report because I don't see it on the site. So, we weren't ready for this testimony tonight.
Okay. So, we're at 9:15, according to my clock here. So, we'll reconvene at May 25th.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to continue.
I'm sorry.
Can you come up to the mic?
Come up to the mic.
You got to be...
I'm forward to the mic, please.
I know, I'm sorry. Just so I'm clear. So, the next meeting on the 25th, we'll start with Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's where actually we were headed.
I can't hear you.
That's why we were, that's why I apologize. The sound system is out of my control. There's only so much I can lean in like this. Mr. Chairman, it's a motion to adjourn, to continue this application to May 25th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, or assume there after the matter may be heard, without further notice, of which the first witness will be the continuation of board examination of Mr. Robinson.
Should we also just put...
Then, when and if Mr. Robinson is finished, and the word is when and if, the next witness will be Ms. Kaphone to finish the examination from the public as to the subdivision issue only.
Solely the subdivision.
Solely, solely the subdivision issue.
And if we get...
If we really luck out, then Mr. Ford.
Right. Okay. So, may I have that motion to continue to the 25th?
So, I'll move to...
Second.
Okay. Can we just do by half-m hour, or do we got a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
I guess also, I guess, Mr. Bernstein, just for clarification, counsel has already questioned Ms. Kaphone as to the subdivision. It's only other members of the public that have not asked her questions yet.
May I, Mr. Chairman, just to make a record?
Yes, because I know at least I do not believe the objection of the...
This is from the December transcript. The next time we convene, we will continue with Mr. Kaphone. If there are any audience members or anyone from the public that wants to continue cross-examination of our, that's the chair's edification, the objectors have questioned her before. That doesn't mean they won't have others, or you, but yes, it will be the public first for Ms. Kaphone. And the public excludes the four objectors. Well, actually, the three objectors. Mr. Lanahan was not an objector at the time Ms. Kaphone testified. So, actually, he gets a shot first before the public.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Anything else?
Yes.
Joe Corr?
Yes.
Schobell?
Yes.
Draztag?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Marilapani?
Yes.
Mike Sherdullian?
Yes.
Chair of Rock?
Yes. I think the objectors here?
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, I have a certification of absent board member examination of record eligibility to vote, signed by Ms. Smith, who I believe is around. She viewed the last video recording of this application on the 12th, and she is therefore eligible. I would also like to indicate for the record again that Mr. Chicorelli has recused himself on this application and has stepped down from the dais for this presentation, and therefore, Ms. Smith is again a potential regular member. So...
Okay. So, we're continuing our next application, 303 Amwell LLC, with file number 21-PB-17-MSPV, with a time of decision of June 30th this year. And this application was also rescheduled from the April 6th meeting without renotice. And I know we have counsel here. Do we have the objector? Mr. Berlin? Okay. Hey, counsel?
Good evening, members of the board.
Yep.
My name is Matthew Flynn from the law firm of Sabo Shaw in Somerville. On behalf of the applicant, 303 Amwell LLC, tonight, we're before the board, continuing our application for preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of an approximately 80,000-square-foot industrial building, consisting of 75,200 square feet of industrial space and 9,600 square feet of office space, and the lot designated as Block 198, Lot 2.03 in the township's tax records, and better known as 303 Amwell Road. Now, as the board is aware, the site is currently vacant.
Mr. Flynn, I think at this point, the objector needs to indicate himself for the reference. And then, before Mr. Flynn gives, I'd like to give a brief overview with Mr. Coys potentially on where we are at the moment before we get a description. Mr. Berlin?
My name is Craig Berlin from 1 Alls House Street in Hillsborough, and I'd like to begin with finding out how we got here from where we ended last meeting.
Well, actually, you're about to find out. Mr. Chairman, as the board may recall, when this applicant was before the board previously, an issue was raised among many relative to whether or not this application in fact was, I won't say conforming, but could be heard under the zoning for the district by this board or another entity. And what was ultimately decided was Mr. Coys and I would be tasked, for lack of a better phrase, with conversations with the applicant and applicant's counsel, who is normally Mr. O'Grady, but is not here this evening because he's away, to have conversations to see whether or not, in fact, we could address the issue of whether or not a more, and I'll put this in quotes, "conforming" close quote, presentation that might meet the potential zoning issue could occur. The parties met, and a set of plans was ultimately provided to Mr. Coys within the last week.
It was prior to 10 days.
Prior to 10 days. Thank you. It has not yet been reviewed by the zoning officer, who, as you recall, was the individual who determined initially that this was not necessarily a conforming application under the zoning. What counsel is here to provide, at least initially, and by the way, that decision has still not been made and is still out there in terms of whether or not the board ultimately does have authority to hear this application or not, is ostensibly what is a concept plan, which was asked by Mr. Coys to be provided. That is what I understand is going to be presented. It is not fully engineered. It is not necessarily a seeking of the boards. It is for board information and the public information. The decision or decisions that have to be made relative to the going forward or not going forward of this application from the planning board have still not been determined and will not be determined this evening. Okay, thank you. Hopefully, that answers your question of why we're here.
Yes, it does.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Flynn?
I can continue. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Yeah, Mr. Bernstein, what he just recited is correct. The applicant has provided a one-page site layout plan that we're prepared to discuss this evening, and also ahead of this meeting and beyond the 10 days. The applicant also supplied a rider dated March 30th, which is entitled Proposed Usage Parameters, which includes a number of examples of uses and facilities Redcom has built that could fit the intention of light industrial in the CDZ zone. And essentially, the idea is that the applicant intends to put a conforming use on the lot and has agreed to modify the original proposal, which was a warehouse application. So, we're here tonight to discuss these usage parameters, confirm it's the applicant's intention to construct a building that not only contains a permitted use in the CDZ zone, but also will ultimately conform to all bulk standards and be a variance-free application. And so, with me tonight, I do have Greg Reddington, a licensed engineer and principal on behalf of the applicant, available to discuss operational testimony and the proposed use for the site. And I also have John Manilio, our professional civil engineer, who can discuss the layout plan, as mentioned by Mr. Bernstein. So, unless there are any legal questions for me, I'd ask for Mr. Reddington to be sworn in.
Well, before we get there, I think I could see Mr. Berlin, out of the corner of my eye, leaning in. I'm sure he has something to say, and then I'm going to have something for the board to say.
I would ask that the board consider, I would submit that we are nowhere near ready to hear anything about this project. There is nothing on the civic site. There is no environmental impact statement. There's no traffic statement. There are no formal plans. There's a sketch, a one-page sketch plan. There is an outline of possible uses of this land, which state nothing more than what the builder has done in other places. Excuse me if I'm wrong, if the owner is more applicable. The outline is wonderful. I can't imagine that it's sufficient to provide testimony about or even discuss at this time. It kind of looked to me like, you know, when you get an assignment and you need to come in with a very detailed book report, and some kid comes in with a couple of lines sketched on a piece of paper. It's wonderful, but it doesn't complete the assignment. So, what we have here, our assignment, is to progress this thing. And I do want everything to be heard. I just submit to you that it's nowhere near ready to be heard, and I don't know what tonight is going to take care of us. I don't know what the objective of tonight is, an informal conversation of what.
It's ostensibly, Mr. Chairman, board members may, for those of you who've been on the board a while, may remember what used to be euphemistically known as a concept plan review. That's what we're here for, basically to go over, and I'll use Mr. Berlin's comment, the sketch, as to what is now being potentially proposed. I don't think beyond that we have anywhere to go. I know the applicant would like to put more on, but basically, what we're here for the board to look at and for the public to look at and comment on to the extent we make it within the next 30 minutes is the sketch, and what is now being at least conceptually proposed for the site versus what is currently the application. And with that, counsel, that's the parameter for tonight.
I would just respond by saying that when we were here on January 12th, we were told that there was a danger that this board wouldn't even have jurisdiction over the application because the definition of what was considered permitted under the CDZ zone was changed after we put on our first night of testimony. So, essentially, we had to go back to the drawing board and come up with an application for a use that's permitted.
No, Mr. Flynn, I apologize for interrupting, but I'm going to. You weren't here that night, Mr. O'Grady was. What the board indicated in the letter from the zoning officer was, it was her belief concurred upon by the planning director that this was not a permitted use in the zone. Your office and the applicant were basically given three options. Option 1, to withdraw the application. Option 2 was to contest the zoning officer's decision to the zoning board, as is permitted under 4055D70A1, or to sit down with Mr. Coys and myself and talk about some concepts that might potentially fit within the provisions of what Ms. McGlaughlin had indicated. The situation has not changed from the January 12th hearing. What has changed, I revise my comment, what has changed is your client has submitted a sketch plan for a possible change building. That's what the board is here for, for your client to present to it in what is ostensibly used to be known as a concept plan review. This is what we're suggesting might meet the criteria. That's what we're here for, nothing more, nothing less. The option for the zoning officer appeal, I believe, is out of time. It is my understanding that your client does want to continue to try to pursue this application in some capacity, and this is the some capacity, at least for the moment we are talking about. It is far from, and I would concur with Mr. Berlin, it is far from an engineered plan. It is far from anything that would in any way be something that this board would potentially consider as a revised application. So, it's up to you. You want to put the proposed plan up and discuss what's the concept? Fine. If the answer is no, we'll keep having conversations to the extent that we'll wait for Ms. McGlaughlin as well to chime in, so to speak, and your client will be back at some other time in the future. And it was my understanding that that was pretty much the conversation that your client had with the planning director earlier today. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's correct.
Thank you.
And I'm not disputing any of that. I'm just stating that we would like Mr. Reddington sworn in to provide some... I'm just stating that we would like Mr. Reddington sworn in to provide some background for what his intentions are for the property before we get to the concept plan.
With all due respect, I love when I chime that phrase out. It's always a funny phrase. What he's potentially proposing to go in there is the cart before the proverbial horse. Let's talk about the possible building before we even get to what comes from that. It makes no sense for this board to hear the possible tenants of a building that we haven't had a discussion about. I know Mr. Reddington likes to tell us those things, but for this one, I think what makes more sense is for the building to be shown and to at least have some discussion about it, because the clock is ticking, versus let's tell the board the possible uses of the building that we don't even have any discussion about. Your call.
I mean, I think there's an inconsistency that's being presented here in that all of the review memos discuss how, you know, there's no end user identified.
That's separate and apart from whether or not this building can go on this site.
I mean, okay, I'll call our engineer to discuss some of the changes that he's made to the original site plan submission with the concept plan.
I think we're, all due respect, I think we're looking for a concept to see if it stays in this board or go to the zoning board, right? So this concept plan, after we have the testimony on file, then the planner and the zoning official can then decide as to if your concept plan fits.
Or what needs to be further tinkered.
Right.
Fair enough. Our intention, again, is to put a permitted use in the building.
So I would think then the concept plan is more important than proposed uses at this point.
Okay.
I know Mr. Reddington would love to speak with, I think he'll have his time, but I think for the time that we have remaining, I think it'd be more useful to get the concept plan up.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Or we close thereafter.
All right, can I square you in?
Mr. Um, is it on? David, check the mic. There it is.
I do. Sure. Legal name is Giovanni, G.I.O.V.A.N.N.I. Last name Manilio, M.A.N.I.L.I.O.
And can you give the board the benefit of your professional credentials?
Sure. I've been sworn in on this board previously. Have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Syracuse University. Been licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for 15 years. My license is currently in good standing. I'm also licensed in New York and Pennsylvania and have testified in front of numerous boards throughout the state.
Okay. Any objections from the board? Okay, we accept. Please proceed.
Can you just generally take the board through some of the changes that have been made reflected in the layout plan as opposed to the site plan submission?
Sure. So this is the plan that was submitted 10 days prior to the meeting, entitled Layout Plan for Light Industrial Use, with a date of March 30th, 2023. Going to zoom into the building section of the site, which is generally located on the north side of the site. So the building has been revised. It has been reduced in size from about 82,240 square feet to an even 80,000 square feet. The major change here is that we did flip the building. The loading docks previously were facing the east. Now they are facing the west, and that's due to some of the conversations regarding the buffering. So the buffer to the east is now 50 feet along the whole property line. We thought it made better sense to have the loading area opposite the area of the residential neighborhood, and also this provided full screening of the loading docks as viewed from Amwell Road as well. We also made some liberties as far as parking layout and site layout, again, for the proposed use of an industrial facility. This building right here is proposed with two office spaces with about a footprint of 2,400 square feet each. They will be two stories for a total office space of 9,600 square feet. Additionally, the building will be consisting of an industrial use. With the industrial use, there's usually some component of an accessory warehouse use, storage of raw materials to be processed, and storage of materials which have been processed or manufactured. For this building, we anticipate, or what we're proposing, is a 43,000-square-foot industrial portion and a 32,200-square-foot accessory warehouse portion, which would be accessory to the industrial use. With that being said, the site will require additional parking spaces, and that's the whole intent of providing this layout, is to show that this site can support an industrial use. A total of 89 or, I'm sorry, 92 spaces are required based on the square footages that we provided. We are proposing 89 physical spaces, 30 of which are being shown as bank spaces. And again, typically, for an industrial use, and the parking requirements is one for 800 square feet for industrial use, and that's a little antiquated these days because a lot of it is automated, so you have less employees that do work for industrial. So that's why we show the bank spaces, that they are there, they can be utilized if we need those spaces, but it doesn't make sense to build more impervious, have more storm water if the spaces are not needed from day one. Of the 89 spaces, we do also have three EV spaces, which meets the requirement for the EV make-ready requirements. So with that credit, we do provide 92 spaces, and we do require 92 spaces, so we conform with that as well. Additionally, we've reduced the number of loading docks. The original submission had, I believe, 12 loading docks, and this concept, we're down to eight loading docks. And the requirement for the township as far as loading dock requirements is that six are required. And again, industry average typically is one dock per 10,000 square feet, so this is in line with it with an 80,000-square-foot building. Eight docks is usually in line with that. Additionally, site changes. We did shift the driveway further to the west to avoid crossing of the end bridge of the pipeline, but we will still have a crossing for emergency egress or emergency fire personnel as well. And that's pretty much the changes that were made to the layout and what we are proposing at this time.
I have a question, if I might.
Sure.
Would you consider this a revision, a major revision, or a minor revision? What type of a revision is this? We've gone from a warehouse. You've shifted, in prior testimony, we've had a question asked, and the question was asked, why was it all built where it was built? And we were told that the west side of the lot created a lot of problems. Now suddenly, everything's on the west side of the lot. For everyone's consideration also, this brings it a whole new item that has to be addressed in that it approaches the house that borders it completely different. I'm not convinced there's enough of a buffer there to this. The last concept that you had for this, or the last submitted plans, had two large-size entryways. This one has one all the way to the right and that one to the left. I'm going to hold the rest off for testimony, and I would expect that we'll start from square one. And my question is, does this require a new application because it's so different? It's a different use? Or are we going to hit that wall again where we just don't know what's going in there so we can't say? It was very interesting listening to the testimony before this and the gentleman speaking about the metals that got into the land and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, this is way outside the scope of our direct. He's essentially filibustering at this point.
Why would I do that? Why would I filibuster? Why am I trying to draw this out so you can't speak? I have genuine concerns of what's going on here, and I'd like to bring to your attention the same way you would like to bring your attention. I'd like to bring my concerns to the attention of the board.
Right, and you always will have your opportunity to do so, but we weren't even through the direct portion of his testimony yet.
I apologize. It sounded to me like you had stopped.
So, I mean, I could answer some of those questions that you had as far as...
No, don't. I didn't ask them. You need to keep going.
Okay.
So as proposed, do you believe that any variances would be required from any residential buffer standards, bulk standards, anything like that?
No, no variances.
Would you like to go through the review memo dated April 5th, 2023, from the board engineer?
Sure.
And respond to any technical comments there on?
Sure. So I don't think we have any issues with the technical...
So I don't think we have issues with technical comments. I think there are some old artifacts from old letters regarding warehouse space and areas, so I just want to make the record known that, you know, the numbers I have stated are the correct numbers for industrial space, warehouse space, and office space, and that the intent of this building is to be an industrial building. There are no variances that are proposed or intended to be proposed.
As far as design wave we're doing, design wave that we're anticipating at this point is...
I think just switch.
Yeah.
You got a bad battery.
So the intent is that the only design wave that is being requested is the size of the parking stalls and aisle width.
And what about the comment number six, which talks about the transition area buffer?
Yeah, so there is a little portion of transition area buffer that we are touching that is similar to what was previously designed with the fire lane as well. Obviously, we will comply with the DEP with the transition area buffer, which we previously provided. We are outside the township stream encroachment corridor.
And any of the other comments? We have no issues stipulating to those?
No, and they will be addressed with the site plans.
Great. Nothing further for this witness.
Mr. Chairman, you can be asking a question.
Sure.
I have gone through my letter early. There is just one issue that has to, you know, remain that has not been clarified. That is the height. And my question is for the applicant's engineer, what is the intention of the height of this building to make sure it conforms if it was up here before this board again?
Yeah, so the intent is to meet the height requirement. I know there was an interpretation of the building height that was discussed with the town planner. Obviously, until we have a full grading plan, we can't give the height, but the intent is to meet the height requirement, or we will meet the height requirement.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I will say is that when this applicant, if this applicant, the board entertains, you know, this proposal on a concept, and the applicant does come back, or whether it be an amended application or what have you, the applicant does provide turning template, the truck turning templates for this proposal. I believe it will work, but to be quite honest with you, I want to, seeing it is believing it, I do believe that should also be provided in not just an application review, but also should be provided and explained to the board if this concept to be accepted. And those are all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I just had one quick one about the relocation of the driveway. You said you had relocated it to avoid the transmission or, you know, the pipeline, but it looks like you're still heading right through it.
So there's no, we're crossing the easement still, but we're not crossing any piping on the site.
It looks like you're crossing over both the lines of the easement.
This is the closest pipe right here. You can see. The next line is the easement line, and the next line after that is the township's transition easement setback line. But we're not physically crossing the pipelines.
Okay.
I do want to note, too, I haven't submitted yet to civil clerk, but we do have actually approvals from Enbridge for the crossing where it was previously located.
All right. Well, the township has an ordinance, so I could give you the blessings. You still have to deal with township ordinance, but, okay. Because the lines here, you know, seems like we're using different types of lines at once. Why it was not clear to me.
Yeah, the double lines are the pipelines. You can see on the, I guess I'm trying to blow up a little bit. These double lines are the pipelines.
Okay. Okay.
For my own education, I'd like an answer to the question whether this is a revision or this is a new use and therefore may be subject to being reapplied for.
My interpretation, it's a revision.
Other than the usage and the driveway movings and everything else, what else brings you, so technically, is still what you would consider a warehouse. It's close enough to a warehouse to call it a revision. You revised, revised a warehouse, and you're calling it something else. But you've provided all this testimony that it is a warehouse, and by just moving the driveway and making the offices smaller, and you've moved the entire building to the other way so that it faces different residents and creates different situations, and I would imagine creates different environmental and stream considerations. My feeling is that perhaps this is a little beyond a revision.
I can respond to that. I mean, basically, the intention here is to take what was originally a warehouse application. We were told that warehousing wasn't permitted, so we'd like to put a light industrial building on the site. It's a modest revision, and our intention coming here tonight was to get some feedback from the board, have Mr. Reddington testify as to what he intends to do with the site, and then provided that this board retains jurisdiction, fully engineered plans would then be submitted, and we would come back. There's no intention to hide anything here. We just want to demonstrate that our intention is to put a permitted use on the site. And we were told last time that what we originally applied for was not permitted, so we therefore will amend the application and change the use to one that is permitted so the planning board retains jurisdiction.
Yeah, and to further, I guess, go what Mr. Flynn has stated. So as far as changes to the site, yes, there has been changes to flipping the building, but the building is essentially the same size. Impervious coverage is essentially the same size. There hasn't, there's going to be the same number of detention basins. So does a change of use make it a major revision versus a minor revision? It's like a tenant coming in and making a shoe store and coming back with a, I don't know, a barber shop. I mean, a change of use does not make it a major revision to the site.
With all due respect, if a different tenant, like a barber shop, came in and moved driveways and changed the building, the way it faces, and moved that building on the site, I think it would represent a major revision. It's not a matter of putting a barber pole out in front of it and calling it a barber shop. What you have here is a different building with a whole different use, and I would like to see a new application that shows, I have no problem with you attempting to get a conforming building on there. That's what you're here for, and that's what we're all here to hear. I just don't, I'm not convinced that we just need to start in the middle of this again and then first look for, you know, this is wearing us all out. It's wearing me out, too. And we don't even have a usage for this, and we're sitting here tonight and talking about this. This conversation, I don't know where it's going to get us. You gave us a list of potential uses, which really were just a list of things that you've done elsewhere, I would imagine, quite successfully. I don't doubt that.
The reason why we're not having a discussion of the usage, whether you put a list together or not, is you have to get to the first part, which is whether or not a potential structure meets the requirements of the LI zone. There's a whole other set of issues, if it does, as to whether or not the applicant can make it work based upon what he intends to do with the project and what conditions, if we get to that point, the board is going to place on it. So one of the reasons why the board, and my recommendation was to limit the engineering testimony to the plant, was exactly that, was to try to keep the thing on the proverbial straight and narrow. It is still possible, quite possible, that planning department may find this equally unacceptable and/or may find it acceptable with variations therefrom, and that at that point, we'll get to where we get to. If I may, Mr. Chairman. How many square feet is this building less than the current application?
So this building is 80,000 square feet.
I'll try the question again.
Sorry, I didn't hear your last part.
How many square feet is the current application versus this one?
The difference is 2,400 square feet.
2,400 square feet less. How many loading docks less?
Four loading docks.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong. This proposal appears to call for two tenants in the building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that is based on your conversations with your client?
The number of loading docks, yes, was based on conversations with the client and meeting the requirement for minimum number of loading docks.
In a lot, based on your experience in a light industrial motif, what kind, how many number, how many loading docks are we talking about normally?
Yeah, so my testimony prior was that typically it's one per 10,000 square feet is the industry average. Building is 80,000 square feet. Essentially, not all of it is industrial, or some of it is office, but it's in line with the industry average.
Does the industry average include warehouse, office space?
Typically, it depends, because the office space is accessory to the industrial. It's not the main use on the site.
Does the office space require additional loading docks?
No, I believe not.
And correct me if I'm wrong, your testimony was the amount of office space is 9,600 square feet?
That is correct.
Which would, if my, would be at least a loading dock, wouldn't it?
So I just want to correct, so when I said 80,000 square feet, that's the footprint of the building. So some of the offices are two stories.
You testified that there's 9,600 square feet of office space, correct?
Correct.
Two offices, if my math is correct, are 4,800 square feet per.
Correct.
Two stories at 2,400. I actually do occasionally pay attention. What's the rest of the building?
75,200 square feet.
How is that possible?
So let me go back with the math. So each office space is 2,400 square feet. There's two of them. So there's 4,800 square feet on the first floor. On the second floor, there's another 4,800 square feet, total of 9,600 square feet. So of the 80,000, 4,800 of the footprint is office. The other 75,200 is industrial.
I clearly like your math, sir, but it's 4,800 on the ground floor. It's 9,600 in total.
Correct.
Right. So therefore, it's really 71,000, 70,400 square feet of non-office space, correct?
No. So let me correct my number. So 80,000 square feet is the footprint. The total floor area is 84,800.
What's the proposed height?
The proposed height has not been established. We need an average grade, but it will meet the township requirement.
If I were to put a two-story office building in effect with 4,800 square feet, how many, what's the height of that office?
So if you're doing a nine-foot ceiling height, that'll be nine foot, and then you probably have two to three feet of structure, so that's 12 feet plus another nine feet, 21 feet.
Does this building call for 21-foot height?
It's going to be higher than, I believe you're allowed 30 feet in the zone.
So you're going to have space over the offices?
Yeah, there will be space.
That's going to be dead space, or is that going to be utilized?
Dead space.
Seems a little odd. So I've seen buildings like that. I've worked in buildings like this, but I haven't had that space. So.
Are you proposing a hard wall between the two spots? You say you're dividing into two?
So it depends on the tenant. So if there's two tenants that are going to occupy the space, yes, it would be a hard demising wall. If one tenant wants to come in and take up the whole space, there will be no demise.
So you're billed based on the tenant?
Correct.
Or tenants?
Tenants, correct.
And the 32 parking spaces is based on what, 9,600 square feet?
Correct.
Which therefore, again, lawyers are not necessarily math majors, even economics. Why would I need 32 parking spaces for 9,600 square feet of office space if you're telling me there's only 4,800 square feet of office space?
There's 9,600 square feet of office space. I'm not sure where the, I don't know where we're getting lost to.
I'm just trying, it's a loading dock and parking-related items, Mr. Delkor.
But there's two floors of office.
I understand.
So you have 4,800 per floor.
But the applicant has indicated that for purposes of calculation of the non-office base, it's 4,800 square feet, 24 and 24. But for the purpose...
On the floor level?
Right.
Per unit.
But for purposes of the parking, it's 9,600, which therefore requires an additional 16 parking spaces.
So maybe, Mr. Bernstein, so there's, let me just go over through it. I'm not sure if I confused you somewhere, but...
So it's 300 square feet per parking space, correct?
So we have an office space on the lower level here. It's 40 by 60. That's 2,400 square feet, and that's two stories, so that's 4,800 square feet of office space. Correct?
Per office or total?
Per this office space I'm showing right now.
Right, and then there's a second office.
That's the same size.
Same characteristic of 4,800 square feet. Again, I'll...
So 4,800 plus 4,800 is 9,600.
But it's only taking up the floor space. You can have 9,600 square feet of office space, but it's a footprint of 4, yeah.
2,400. 4,800.
For two. 9,600, 4,800, I mean...
I'm not sure.
It's a cube.
So getting back with the height, how are you going to determine what the height's going to be?
That's, the intent is to meet the maximum allowed per the zone.
Why do you want to max it out?
So for industrial space and for...
It costs more, you know, more money. I mean, if, you know, usually, you would go up as high as possible if you're looking to stack items, but if you're looking to do manufacturing, what kind of manufacturing or the businesses I'm seeing listed here, I'm not so sure they warrant, you know, a maxed-out building.
So it depends on the tenant. You know, you're, again, there's no tenant for the space, so you're limiting yourself. So it's like building a house and saying, you know, I'm going to only build, you know, eight-foot ceilings. You know, why won't you build nine or 10? Because that's more desirable.
Well, it's aesthetics, but we're talking about, you know, light industrial. We're not necessarily looking and worrying about aesthetics. We're looking at functionality. I'm trying to understand, you know, that you're looking at light industrial and really don't, short of unless you're going to be doing like a continuous batching chemical facility where you need large, you know, vessels to go up, I'm not seeing it in this list.
So I understand the comment, but I guess where I'm lost is, you know, it is permitted in the zone as far as the height. We're not asking for relief on the height. And I have seen industrial facilities that have larger machinery, presses, injection molding that will require, and sometimes they require pits because it doesn't fit in the building.
I've worked injection molding houses. Our presses did not reach my second floor. So I'm not sure where you're, unless you're going to build a second floor of manufacturing, that's why I'm just trying to conceptualize here. It sounds like we're not going to do that, and then presses are not going to be going up that high.
Yeah, I just had a quick question back on the number of loading docks.
Sure.
And the square footage. But right now, the new concept, I guess, is 84,000 square feet?
So you get 80,000 footprint, 84,800, all right?
And what was the original? Like, how much was that reduced, if at all?
The footprint was reduced by 2,000 to 40, but I guess there has been a net increase in floor area.
Okay, so it's not much smaller overall, but you reduced, and you said 10,000 square feet per loading dock?
That's usually the industry average.
Is that the industry average for a warehouse or for a light industrial?
Light industrial.
So what would be this, the average square footage for a warehouse? Do you know?
For where, one for 500, 6,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 or 6,000 square feet.
Okay, and this is for one per 10,000? Okay. So now it's eight loading docks in the new plan versus it was 12?
Correct.
And I guess that makes that math work, because the five, 12 for 5 or 6,000 is like 96,000, and now...
I think they were a little short last time.
For 10,000 average, it's eight, so...
Right.
That's why it makes sense. All right, I wanted to kind of understand that. So...
They bet the township loading, but the industry average, it was a little short last time.
Okay. And the trips, so it's fewer loading docks, one per 10,000 to the trips? That depends on the use, like how many trips per?
Yeah, that will be dependent on the use. We'll have a traffic or revised traffic report.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just regardless if there's going to be one or two tenants, we're going to have both sets of offices?
So, I'm sorry, if there's one tenant, you're asking if there's still going to be two offices? It's a possibility, depends on the tenant, but we want to have the flexibility to have two offices and two tenants. I mean, a tenant could come in here and not want two stories and might want just a one-story, one, you know, 2,400 square foot office space. But what we're proposing is, any tenant that comes in here, this is the max that they can propose. Anything after that, they would have to come back in front of the board for variance.
All right, we're a little bit past 10, so at this point, we need a continuation? Or...
Yeah, we need a continuation, and we also probably need some feedback from planning and zoning.
All right. Okay. David, do we have another date open, or are we going to...
Right now, we have the next completely open planning board meeting is June 1st. That's here. The May 25th will be the homestead.
We won't be completely open before this is over.
I'm sorry? Well, yeah. Should we adjourn for...
I mean, June 1st, but I think everybody needs to be aware of the possibility that there may be more than one application on, on June 1st, depending on what occurs over the next few weeks, so.
Right.
Would they really be ready to talk anything June 1st? Would they be ready to do anything?
What about a...
Would you be ready? Go ahead.
I was going to say, what about a little after June?
So there's, like, after June completely?
Yeah, like in...
September, July, or August?
Well, not August.
So after, so after June, we have July 6th, July 13th as our regular meetings, and then August, we have no meetings. And then it doesn't start up again until September.
July 13th.
July 13th is available to the pleasure of the board.
And it's TOD. Time of decision, do we need to extend?
Yeah, and I did. We extended through September.
Yeah, it was June 30th, I believe.
Yep, so we extended through September, and we executed the affidavit this evening.
And do you have, sorry, just for the sake of the record, is it September 30?
28th, I believe.
September 28th.
Yep, there you go.
So it's a continuation of this application without further notice to July 13th with an extension of the time of decision through September. Why 28th? Why not the 29th? It's the end of the month.
I want to say it because maybe there was a meeting on the 28th that was suggested.
That's a potential business meeting. You want to make it the 28th, we don't care.
28th is fine. We'll do it. September 28th.
Which, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The time of decision would be September 28th.
Okay.
Okay.
This meeting is July 13th. What was September 28th? I'm so sorry.
That's the time of decision.
I got you.
Okay, so I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 not yet.
Almost, Ken.
Almost.
Almost, if you have one day.
Okay, so motion to extend.
I'll make a motion to extend, so I can continue. Extend the hearing to July 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. We're assuming thereafter, as the matter may be heard, with the extension of the time of decision from June 30th, 2023, to September 28th, 2023, without further notice.
And I believe the mayor made the motion, and Mr. Scobbo made the second. So roll call, please.
Mr. Peason? Yes. Ms. Gafford?
Yes.
Scobbo?
Yes.
Rattus?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnie?
Yes.
Chair Swat?
Yes, and we have a meeting in two weeks?
I don't believe you're going to need one.
No. Yeah, I'm just trying to remember. David, what's our next?
We had thought there might be the possibility, but I don't think there's going to be...
So do we need to cancel? Take your mic.
Okay, you can hear me? Okay, great. All right, April 27th, the only possibility of keeping it would be for the next, for the next ordinance that's coming about? Other than that, that would have to be, that would be heard on May 4th?
How many applications do we have on May 4th right now?
May 4th, we currently have two. We have the county of Somerset, and we have Weston Road.
I think you might want to leave the 27th for the possible ordinance and whatever's coming.
So do you want me to just have a motion that if we decide to cancel, that I'm authorized to cancel it? But we'll keep it.
Motion to authorize the chair to cancel the April 27th business meeting if there is no need for same, and notice will be given 10 days before, May or by Monday.
Right.
So moves.
Okay. Can we do by affirmation or roll call?
Affirmation.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ken, go make your motion now.
Motion to adjourn.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All have to.